Good afternoon. Welcome to Peoria City Council Study Session for Tuesday, July 2 with the Clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here. Thank you. We're going to do the study session. Study session, we can talk about issues, but we cannot vote on them. This is an opportunity for us to exchange views with the council and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett and councilmembers. We have two items on our study session agenda this evening. And John Sefton, our Community Services Director, will lead both of those subjects. And the first is an update on our Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan. John?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to take up a couple of hours of your time to talk about the important things of Parks Recreation in our next Agenda Item Special Events. It's been a long while since I've communicated to you the Community Services Department Mission Statement. It is the mission of the Community Services Department to meet the needs and the desires of the citizens of Peoria by developing, implementing, and maintaining quality programs, services, and facilities which are cost-effective, creative, and responsive to citizen input. A key process and a key document used to meet this mission is our Master Plan, and that's what we'll talk about tonight. All right, the Post, while it's true that it is German for cheers or bottoms up, we here in Peoria know it as our Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan. The Master Plan efforts go back to the mid-'90s when the original Post was passed and adopted by Mayor and Council in 1996. We've had updates in 2002 and again in 2006. And as we communicated back on January 22nd, our master planning process this year is underway again, and we're here tonight to provide you a promised update to our progress. Obviously, a task this big doesn't get done by a single person. There's a lot of folks involved. I want to recognize our staff. Kirk Haynes has been tasked with project lead. He's done a great job thus far, and I'm sure will continue to do. Other managers, Brenda Renke, Chris Calcaterra, and Mary Roberts have all been involved, and each of them have had key team members involved in the process as well. I want to express my appreciation to our Community Services members that have taken time to share their expertise, and I also want to reach out and a shout-out to all the other departments as well. Very, very important process, and everybody's been engaged as a team. We often speak about our city volunteers. One of those important sets of volunteers is our Parks and Recreation Board. Tonight, we have Bill Collette, Chair. I think they'll give a wave. There we go, big wave from the crowd. Rich Ward, Bill Connor, Brent Taylor, and Brian Derrick. And our consultant team that we've compiled, a very impressive group of folks. Stacy Weeks, from Norris Design, Stacy Weeks, Cindy Pedrioli, and Hampton Uzell, GIS guru, from Leisure Vision, ETC, Ron Vine, and from EPG, no stranger to Peoria, Dave Wilson, also in the audience. Your packet contains a significant amount of information. This is beyond an executive summary, but is completely short of what would be the complete analysis. Tonight is a critical step as we gain your perspective on the objectives as they relate to Parks, Recreation, Trails, and library elements. As we go through these elements, your comment, or the comments within the presentation will surely spur question. Please note, this is not a final product, nor is it a set of final recommendations. It is simply a capture of what we've learned thus far in the public engagement process as well as the community survey compilation. We aim to synthesize this information along with your insight and bring back to you a final product that truly represents Peoria. As we go through the process, I ask that you look for terminology, look at numbers and comparisons, look at themes and concepts, and do they really resonate, or do they not? In addition to Stacy's presentation on the purpose, approach, and community profile, Mr. Ron Vine will provide and discuss many of the highlights that we achieved from doing the community-wide survey. So with that, oh, he won't turn it over just yet. With that, it's first important to frame up the relationship between the Post document, the Open Space Plan, and the 2011 approved general plan. This slide demonstrates that important relationship between these three foundational documents. While the Post and the Open Space Planning are both in the middle of the process, staff and consultants work to ensure compatibility and supporting recommendations, and it's truly seen as a holistic planning approach. We've also included the Peoria Trails Master Plan from 1998, the Cultural Arts Master Plan from 2009, and the Youth Master Plan that we passed just last year in 2012. I have to give credit to Logan Simpson Design, who has developed this concept, and the team that's working on the Sonoran Preservation Program and the Implementation Plan. So with that, and as detailed in your packet of information, tonight, we want to focus on three key areas. As representatives of your districts and the community, are the findings and priorities that have been revealed through the community survey and the public meetings, are they in alignment with what you hear from your constituents and from folks across the city? We hope that you can focus on the level of service. We'll have some maps, those are always fun. We'll have some opportunities to look at that level of service, and do they align with what you hear from the community? And thirdly, we'll look at the vision and the goals of the Community Services Department. Are there key items that you think that this document should produce and set forth as recommendation as we go into the next five to 10 years? Now with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy Weeks.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, council, staff that's here, city manager, appreciate the time today with our team. We've been very busy, and we have a lot of information to share with you in a brief period of time, so hang on. Let us know if you have any questions along the way, too. We want this to be interactive so that we make sure that we're getting the discussion at this forum with you, so we can make sure things that you're hearing is heard and shared with us as we move forward with integrating these items into the planning process. The project purpose, a Master Plan update, is that it's a periodic process to understand the current and future needs, how they're being met, and how they'll be met in the future for the community. It's important that this process looks at how programs, facilities, and services are being delivered, and understanding what the public impression of that delivery is. The findings from this, the needs assessment and the planning process that we're working through right now will lead to recommendations and an action plan for the Community Services Department. This is important because it helps the efforts with the accreditation process that the Community Services Department is currently underway with, and it also serves as a baseline for future decision-making. Basically, we're putting together the data that will help inform the future decisions for Community Services Department in the city. So the Master Plan is a collective effort. We work together as a team with staff, with the community, all together, working on the development of the information that we see as where things are today, where things are going, and how are we going to get there. It becomes a roadmap, really. And it's important because this is a critical part of community infrastructure and goes back to a council goal, community building. So this is really a critical piece to how a community thrives. As I mentioned, it informs the decisions, and as John was highlighting, what we wanted to discuss today is what you're hearing from the community, what we've heard from the community, does that compare in terms of level of service, how the city's performing, and where it needs to go? And then, in addition to that, the big picture of the areas of focus that we'll be looking at. So we've been busy since the beginning of the year. This is a quick slide that highlights what's been accomplished to date. What we call this is the Draft Needs Assessment, which includes inventory and assessment, community engagement. As John mentioned, we've evaluated the existing plans that are out there and current efforts that are going on, and integrated that into our planning analysis. And we've gone through a series of different steps of analytical process to develop a report that we're working with staff right now on reviewing and refining into a final product. Where we go from here is developing the recommendations in the prioritized plan. So that's the next step. This was a lot of work in the beginning. Now we got a lot more work to do for you. We wanted to start with the baseline here, demographics. Peoria is growing. I know you're seeing the signs of growth. It's good to see it back. The projections are approximately 1% growth. It'll be interesting to see if that trends higher, so higher than the national average. One of the findings we found is a large percentage, which is probably not to your surprise, is that this is a family community. There are some interesting trends on the front end where there is a small decrease in family generation, and then an increase in the 65-plus demographic. So what this tells us is we need to make sure when we're looking at the recommendations that we're thinking of a broad demographic here and meeting the needs of an evolving community, both on the young family side and older aging population within the Peoria area. And that's reinforced by the median age, which is a little bit higher than the national average. One of the core pieces of understanding where Peoria is today is an assessment of the facilities and inventory of those. And so this is a brief slide that highlights the facilities that Peoria manages. There's 38 parks, the obviously Rio Vista Community Center, five indoor facilities from the sports complex to community center. And we also have the outdoor pools and the basketball courts that are shared with the school. In addition to that, we have the main library and Sunrise Mountain Library. So it's a big collection of facilities that the department manages, and right-of-way areas as well. So there's several elements that are managed by the Community Services Department, which comprises the acreage that you can see here. And we'll highlight, as we go through, with a piece in here, benchmarking how that translates into comparables with other jurisdictions.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Yeah, we're looking at the, was that, was the median age you had there?
Oh, yeah.
Do you recall seeing the kind of the age for other cities in Maricopa County and generally, are we a little higher than the average?
Phoenix age is 35 and a half.
35, okay.
Yep. And then Arizona's 36.8. So just a percentage higher than the other areas.
Yeah, that's a noticeable amount.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that inventory, what we've completed is actually a physical inventory, which is a digital database in GIS. So our team was out in the field evaluating the different parks and facilities out there and documenting this. So this becomes a really critical part to the future of the Community Services Department because this is the story of where you are today. And it's digital and live, and it allows you to evaluate things on the fly, automatically, digitally. So it's a really important piece. With that, we also looked at the quantitative side of it, which is evaluating the assets at each park, which are playgrounds to remadas, to bathrooms, and so forth, and providing a rating on those which is comparable within the park system. And we've done this on several projects, so we kind of have a baseline on how we evaluate that. And so this becomes kind of the core piece of data for the department. With that, with a image that is probably very small on your screen, is all your facilities identified in a map there. If we do have a larger one, if we do need to look at it. But what I wanted to talk with you is basically what we've started is developing our initial analysis on what, how the Peoria-managed facilities meet the needs and the level of service within the community. So it's important now we have the data that we can use GIS to basically create different analytical studies on this. So we'll walk through a couple, and feel free if you have questions as we go through, and we can always provide further information after the presentation. But how, this is the initial exhibit of park facilities, and what this shows is based on the qualitative conditional analysis, the ratings generally are between 60 to 80% range, which is, actually performs pretty well. And so you see the color range from yellow to the green, lighter green color. And this is created with buffers for the service area for a neighborhood park of a half acre, or a community park of five, sorry, five miles and a half mile for a neighborhood park. So that's about how it serves the area geographically, just as a bird flies. So this basically sets a baseline for how those parks are performing for those specific areas. What's interesting is how, when you layer, this has trails included into it, and this shows how the connectivity in those routes along, say, New River and Scott Creek, start to influence the connectivity between the park system. So this is just straight performance of those individual assets and facilities. This exhibit is called a cumulative analysis, and what it does is overlays the facilities as they perform in conjunction with each other. So what you're seeing on the bottom is a rating system that goes from, we won't even go to poor, but adequate to excellent. And you can see how the coloring goes from the lighter color to the darker color. So that's where the heavier intensity of where the overlap of those facilities are and how they're performing for the community. And what you'll see on the southern side is obviously the existing park systems grow in there every, over a period of time, and the existing density of population is down there that's been served over this period of time. So the coverage is better covered in the southern area. And as things have developed on the northern side, you can see how those neighborhood parks are performing for the neighborhoods. And knowing the development patterns, you can see where the Vistancia's are, West Wing are, on the northern side of Peoria. So this is basically starting to show the picture of where the southern area of Peoria has a lot of amenities that serve the community, and the northern area has opportunities to start, to fill in areas to better meet those needs. In addition, if you overlay the trails, you can see what the difference the trails make on the northern side in helping provide additional connectivity in the area, and also enhancing the level of service in the northern area. It's fairly dramatic as you look at what the trail system does on the northern area. So it's important that the recent investment in the trail system and the facilities have definitely enhanced the level of service for the community. And it's hard to actually see the impact of Pioneer Park in here because it just, it kind of adds to the whole mix on the southern area as well, but important asset to add to the community in terms of serving the regional and community needs. And finally, I just wanted to highlight this. Peoria Sports Complex is an important asset for Peoria, and you'll see, as you can really see on the northern side, what the impact, and that's a 10-mile radius on it, but how that serves the community, so the difference that a regional facility like that makes to Peoria. And then another analysis that I just wanted to quickly share with you is, and it's important for Peoria's driving distance, and it's something that we've discussed during the community meetings, but you can see how the different, the hot zones, I guess you'd call those, the brown color, is where there's good coverage within the driving distance and the consent, or the core areas where that is, and the upper areas, how it serves directly around the parks. And in addition to that, we looked at walking distance because walkability is important, and being able to meet the community needs on the walkability side of neighborhood parks is an important thing to consider as we move forward. So we'll continue to evaluate that and be able to provide comparisons there. Community engagement is, was a core piece to the project from the beginning. Staff made it clear that wanted to make this as much of an interactive process as possible and get the most out of the community as we can. There's a lot of familiar faces back here, and I've seen a few folks here at our meetings. We had six public meetings, starting down the street at the Community Services Department. We went to Rio Vista, we went to Westbrook Village, we went to Vistancia, West Wing. So we really tried to cover geographic areas to get people in. Two weeks ago, we were also at, we were also meeting with the Parks and Rec Board at Camino Lago regarding the Camino Lago site. So we were up at, with that meeting a week and a half ago doing an update on the plan. In addition to that, we also had a series of stakeholder interviews with sports teams, the different associations, members of the arts community, and different stakeholders within the community, which were very fruitful in terms of gathering information. And one of the other fun components of this that we like to do, and we had a great opportunity to do, was a government day with the students. We had about 60 students that had a very good interactive experience with them and very good input. Their priorities are maybe a bit different than some of the other priorities we heard previously. We have a website, and I hope that all of you have been on it, mypeoriaaz.gov, and it's a portal that allows comments on the fly, and we've had a lot of input from the community on it, and we continue to provide updates through there. And then finally, we are fortunate enough to have Ron Vine with Leisure Vision here that did a terrific job with the survey, which he'll highlight here in a moment. And I just wanted to quickly highlight, before Ron talks about the survey, is just the community engagements part, and collectively, the trend we heard of how complimentary community was in terms of what Peoria has delivered, the facilities and the maintenance that, the high level of standards that Peoria has maintained through, you know, a truly challenging period of time. And it's, you know, shown as you move forward with almost the completion of Pioneer Community Park. The other side of it is we had great input from the community, both on the side of, you know, pickleball from the Vistancia crowd to philanthropic ideas when we're in West Wing, to really specific things from equestrian to trails. So we've had a lot of great input and suggestions. And some of the top wishlist items you can see up there, Rec Center, particularly one on the northern side of Peoria, lighted sports fields, which, you know, just getting, accommodating the sports activities is always a challenge to do in Arizona. More trails, and that'll be reinforced with what Ron's going to share with you, open space and aquatics. So, you know, the residents realize Peoria is growing, and there's a need as the population continues to grow here to meet their wishes and serve their needs. So I'll let Ron talk about the survey here.
Thank you. I definitely will tell you that the most challenging thing I'll have, or at least one of them, is working this. I am completely technologically challenged mechanically, so I apologize when I start putting things backwards and upside down and stuff like that. I'm Ron Vine. I'm the Senior Vice President with ETC Institute. Pleased to be with you. This is just a little slide about our firm because many of you do not know us, but we are a firm that works completely in the public sector. We've worked in 46 states. We've done about 2,500 surveys for local units of government. And the area that we, one of the areas that we have a national practice is in Parks and Recreation. We've actually done about 700 surveys for park systems across the country. I've done about 98%, and I usually tell my daughters I'm probably the only person in the United States who makes a full-time living doing park surveys. Which, when people say that's got to be a fun business, I usually say, "Yeah, as long as I'm making enough money to keep my life happy." These are just some examples of communities that we've worked with that are over 150,000 people here in Arizona, and I think one of the things you'll see as a common theme is they're very good communities. They're communities that are ranked at the very top as far as livability, they're ranked at the very top as far as park systems. And I couldn't help but notice when I came into your offices and I saw eight plaques for Peoria being ranked one of the top four park systems in the country those years. I happen to have been a director, and I had four of those plaques, so I know how hard you have to work in order to get those. You have a very fine system, and we've worked with other fine systems. So let me just tell you a little bit about the community survey we administered for you. Our goal was to complete 800 surveys. We actually did complete just a little bit over that, 811 surveys. We have a process where we administer a survey through a combination of mail phone, mail phone, online. And most of the surveys, about 500 or so, came in through the mail, and then the second amount was through phone, and then the third amount was through the web. But this gives the broader space of opportunities for people to participate. The results of the survey have a 95% level of confidence and a margin of error of plus or minus 3.4%. And 800 surveys is a very good amount for a community your size. As an example, we completed a survey for Los Angeles, it's 2,800 surveys. So when you do 800 surveys in a community the size of Peoria, you're able to get very, very good information, and you're able to mine that information down at various demographic levels, such as households with children, without, age respondents, gender, ancestry, library users or non-users, level of tax support, and comparison to national benchmarks, which because we've done so many surveys, I'm going to kind of let you know a little bit of where you relate as compared to other communities, which is, quite frankly, very good. This just shows a little bit the demographics. Demographics of the survey are always a really key point of any survey, and your demographics are very good. These are the respondents, and they compare very, very closely to the census in your community. And when you look at the demographics from a standpoint of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish ancestry, it's actually higher than the 2010 census as far as responses from those with Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish ancestry, but it's probably grown a little bit since the 2010 survey, in any case. But that's one of the key things we're able to accomplish through the phone survey. We do a lot of work, like in Miami-Dade County, San Antonio, Los Angeles, that have high Hispanic population. So we do those surveys all in-house. So let's talk about your system, just give you a bottom line. And one of the things that I mentioned is that if I were John, is kind of the way I would say it, if I were John, I would not be embarrassed to sit before the City Council with this presentation. And I might also say that all the surveys that you have done are extremely valuable. And most of the other surveys that you have, parks is as police and fire is dealt with at more of a macro level, because you're comparing, you could only ask a certain amount of questions, you're comparing departments to each other, services to each other, but it's macro. This survey, you know, the strength of it is you could ask questions about Parks and Recreation at a micro level. You can mine deeper information. You can compare aspects of the system with each other. At the same time, we recognize that you don't compare Parks and Recreation with other city services in a survey of this type. So I say that at the beginning just to be reflective of the strengths of this type of a survey from a mining standpoint, a deeper appreciation of the issues, but also at the standpoint that it doesn't compare with other services.
Okay.
Yes?
Do have a question. You have 90% of households that use parks. Did you direct this survey at users of parks and libraries and trails, or did you just randomly?
It's a complete random survey.
Okay, so how many are actually users?
Well, from a standpoint of like the park system itself, there's about 77% of the households use your park system, which is just a little bit higher than the national average. The national average is 72% of households. So 23% don't use your house, don't use your park system. Now, when you ask about recreation programs, about 30% of those who returned surveys were recreation program users, and 70% were not. So one of the real strengths of our approach, quite frankly, is sometimes when you have a mail-only survey, they could kind of self-select, but when you have a mail or phone survey, you're going out, you're reaching to it. So we have those who are, you know, heavy users, we have those that are modest users, we have those that don't use at all, just a real combination. And as we find in most communities, there's more people who use parks, and there's more people who use trails than there are people who participate in recreation programs.
And how about the library?
Library did very, very well. I think the usage rate in the library was around 60%. It did very well. You're going to see some slides later. It's considered to be a very important asset to the community, and it shows solidly that the public thinks that you've done a very good job to date, although there are still opportunities for improvements.
Thank you.
You bet. So as you look at the system today, over 90%, 90% of households who use parks and trails rate the conditions as excellent or good. Over 95% who use the programs rate the quality as excellent and good, the same way in regards to the library. At the same time, opportunities exist for a wide range of parks, trails, recreation, and library facilities and programs. And I might say that when you look at that 95% as an example with parks, of that 95% who think you're doing an excellent to good job, about 40-some percent think you're doing an excellent job. Nationally, that number's about 30%. So one of the things from a policy standpoint is to say, is 40-some percent good enough? You know, that's about half the people who rate you excellent or good are excellent, about half are good. rate you excellent or good are excellent, about half are good. You're thirty, forty percent higher than the national average, which is great, but Peoria is a top-notch community, so do you want to be forty-five percent above the average? Do you want to be forty-eight, or are you here where you are? And that work that the entire team's gonna do is enable you to position on making the types of decisions that are the best interest of Peoria, both today and in the future. What are the highest priorities? What are the community's visions for the future? Well, the highest priority facilities to community members of five are walking and biking trails, small neighborhood parks, extremely important libraries, large community parks, and indoor fitness. When you look at what are the most important programs, adult fitness at the top of the list, community special events, I know you're gonna be talking more about that, youth sports programs, museums, arts and cultural programs, youth learn to swim programs, those are at the top. Just as, and some of those are more important to various demographic groups, but like as an example of adult fitness, it doesn't matter whether you're an empty nester, or it doesn't matter whether you have children, adult fitness is one of the top three program areas. And actually, for people my age, and I'm gonna be turning sixty-three this month, adult fitness is the most important program for those who are fifty-five and older.
Define adult fitness.
Adult, you know, anything in a survey is defined by what the person thinks. We just say, you know, "Do you have a need for adult fitness and wellness programs?" And people can say yes or no, that they have a need for that. Most people, when you ask that question, they'll define those types of things as cardiovascular, use of a walking trail, participating in a yoga class or a ropeless class. When we drill down deeper, that's what people most commonly say that means to them.
Yeah, and, you know, highest priority, and looking at adult fitness, that doesn't mean they do it a lot necessarily, does it?
Well, it means that...
That's the image, for sure.
Are you, why are you looking at me when you say?
But, you know, if there is a gap there, maybe we can influence those that know they should, but aren't as much, right?
I think that most people would look at that and totally agree. We did actually a survey from Maricopa County for the Association of County Government, but it was a senior survey, and it showed that adult fitness is one of the things that people really felt was important, because their health in the future, as you get older, they see that as being very, very important, and they see fitness as being a component of keeping them healthy. So what about funding? We always look at a survey. Our natural order is to first look at how do you use the system today. The second order is, what's the community's vision for the future? And the third is, how they would sustain that vision. And we asked two types of questions. We said, "When you're looking at the dollars that you currently have, where would you like to invest those dollars the most?" And people are saying, "Maintain and improve existing parks. Fix up and repair aging recreation facilities. Maintain and improve existing libraries. Maintain and improve trail systems, and maintain and improve existing playgrounds." One of the things we found in our work around the country is, when we asked people how they would invest a hundred dollars, they far and away say that they'd invest the most money is maintaining the existing system. They know that they've invested a lot of money already in that system, particularly in a place like Peoria. They know that you've done a good job, and in many cases, what we're hearing from the survey is, "You've done a good job, keep it up." And that's a strong message. When you're looking at a potential, if you had some additional tax dollars, which everybody would love to do that, but it's difficult, but if you did have some, the things that they'd like to fund is develop additional walking and biking trails, the appetite is still there for that. Purchasing land to preserve open space is something that's important across the country, and it's particularly important here in Peoria. Develop lighting along multi-use trails, purchasing land to develop passive facilities, generally defined as trails, picnicking areas, things that are self-directed type of activities. And then fourth, fifth, excuse me, develop a new indoor aquatic center. When we looked at the thing that people were probably the least satisfied with of all of the recreation activities or facilities in Peoria was the quantity and quality of indoor aquatic facilities. So, just getting back to the question that you asked a little bit ago, when we asked, it's just mining of the information, when we asked people, "Do you participate in any recreation programs?", twenty-nine percent said yes, seventy-one percent said no. That's about a national average. That twenty-nine percent is right about at the national average. The highest we've ever seen is right at, you know, in the high forties. Henderson, Nevada is one of the highest. We've seen communities that are low as eleven percent. What we don't see very often, though, is forty-nine percent of residents saying that they think the programs that are offered are excellent. That's very, very high, and it's to credit to a lot of things, but it's just a really high number. The normal number's about thirty-one percent, so you're well above fifty percent higher. So I think if you talked to John and said, "We're not happy with forty-nine percent, you know, we want to get to sixty percent," well, I hate to tell you this, but they could probably give you as much money as you could possibly invest, and he's gonna disappoint you. He's not gonna get to sixty percent. But even staying at forty-nine percent is excellent. When you look at, how would you rate the physical condition of the parks and trails your household visited, you're at forty percent. The average, again, is about at thirty-one percent. So you're good there. One of the things that occurs is when you have a lot of park usage, which you do, it puts a lot of wear and tear on those parks. And so it takes, and that's why at the top of the list is maintaining the existing parks, because you have seventy-seven percent of people who are using it, and so they want to make sure that they continue to be in good shape as they are today. And then when you look at your library system, I was right on the money when it came to the usage, the usage of a library is much higher than those who participate in programs. So those who use the library is far higher than half your public. But when it looks at the programs that the library operates, it's about thirty-five percent. And again, you can see excellent ratings, fifty-nine percent. Now, we don't do national benchmarks on that, on library, but I would imagine if we did, your library programs would be rating in the top percentile of libraries that we see around the country. And then last, Stacy talked about what's important, what's the reasons that people participate in programs. What we find around the country, this is very, very common, location of the program facility is the number-one reason people participate in programs. It's not the time that the program's offered, it's not even the quality of the instructor, it's not that friends participate, it's where it's located. And it doesn't matter whether you have young children, it doesn't matter whether you have teenagers, it doesn't matter if you're empty nesters, eighteen to fifty-five, or empty nesters, fifty-five and older, location, 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 number-one reason people participate.
I see, though, that the cost is second highest.
It is, it is second highest here. And I think it is a little bit, you know, it's definitely things that people are saying, "Hey, the fee is what we consider to be a fair value." You know, people oftentimes, when we first started doing survey work, they said that, you know, the biggest barrier to people participating in programs is, you know, that the fees are too high. It's really not. It's, people are willing to pay value for a good program. They don't want to pay a high fee for a poor program. Well, you have very good programs. But certainly the fees that you charge, your public thinks are fair for the value they receive. This is a slide that we actually developed this for Fairfax County, Virginia, which is also one of the top systems in the country about fifteen years ago, and we're kinda known for this slide. And what it really says is, when we ask people, "Do you have a need?" And this is a chart on the left. If we ask people, "Do you have a need for walking and biking trails?", forty thousand households said yes, they had a need for that. When we ask people, "Do you have a need for small neighborhood parks?", thirty-nine thousand households said they had a need for that. When we ask, "Do you have a need for libraries?", thirty-two thousand. So those are at the top. Walking, biking trails, small neighborhood parks, libraries, large community parks, outdoor picnic areas, playgrounds, and then indoor fitness. Those are at the top. A real key, Tony, if I can kinda look at, a real key, though, is, let's say that in your household you said you had a need for walking and biking trails, would you say yes? Or would you say no? The real key question in planning a future of a system is, how well do the current walking and biking trails in Peoria meet your household's needs? And not just what the city offers, but what Mayor Copacouche, anything that your household could use. And so if I would ask you, if your household received a survey, and I said, "Trails that you have now, do they a hundred percent meet the needs of your household, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, or zero?", do you mind if I ask you what your answer would be? A hundred percent. Okay, well, that would mean in your household, your vision of your household is, you've got enough trails for your household right now. So, and that's what we talk about as far as unmet needs. And I will tell you that a lot of people in the community agree with you. Somewhere around thirty-five to forty percent say, "Trails right now, a hundred percent meet my needs." And seventy-five percent of those households who say that they have a need for trails, rank their needs as a hundred percent or seventy-five percent being met. So you've got, but you've got about ten thousand households who're saying they're fifty percent, twenty-five, or zero. So, you've got a huge market there. And so the same thing with small neighborhood parks. Small neighborhood parks, people think you're doing a fantastic job, but it's a big market, and there's about twenty-five percent of that market are saying, "My needs are still fifty percent or less being met." And that's the chart to the right. So when you look at, what are the key things that people are saying, you know, are the biggest unmet needs, things to look at? Lighted trails, indoor fitness, indoor running and walking track, indoor swimming, walking and biking trails. You know, those are things that people are saying, there's still opportunities to improve in those areas.
Yeah, what was the usage of our trails, the number that used trails?
We didn't ask a question in regards to usage. What we have typically found in communities when we do ask that question, like, do you have...
It's lower than some of these others.
It is, it's lower. It's generally about, it's generally anywhere from twenty, from ten to twenty percent lower, generally in that area. And part of that is, you know, whether you have a good trail system. Like, if you have a bad trail system, it could be people say, eighty percent of people might say, "I have a need for trails," fifty percent of people might say, "I participate," but in that case, only fifteen percent might say, "My needs are a hundred percent being met," because they're not very happy. But generally, when we ask that question, that gap is about ten to twenty percent.
Yeah, I'm wondering if access to trail heads, that must be...
Excuse me?
Access to the trail heads and the distance people have to go, that must be an important variable, right?
Well, absolutely. As we were talking about before, location is key. And we do have, in our surveys, we have geocoded our surveys, so we'll be able to overlay with Stacy and his people where those biggest unmet needs are, and where those biggest priorities are, and so it'll, you'll even be able to take it drilling down even further. Then when we look at, the last thing we would ask you, Tony, is if you said you had a need for nine things, and we asked you your unmet, we'd say, "What's the most important thing?" And I could tell you for a fact that there's about twenty-seven things we measured. If you made improvements to twenty-four of the facilities on this list and didn't do anything with walking and biking trails, small neighborhood parks and libraries, but did something for everything else, your citizens would be very unhappy, very unhappy, because those are absolutely dominant players. See the blue line? The blue line represents first choice. And you could see that there's about forty, you know, about thirty-five percent of households who say, "That's my first choice, most important thing." And again, so I think what the public is saying is, small neighborhood parks are in need, walking and biking trails are in need, libraries are in need, you're doing a real good job in those areas, keep it up. That's really the message that we hear. Same thing from a programming standpoint. I don't want to take you through as much in detail, but we asked the same question, "Do you have a need?", "How well is your need being met?" And here, the one thing I will say is, when you look at the percentage of people who say they have a need for adult fitness at twenty-five thousand, and then what percentage are saying their needs are not being met, it's about thirteen thousand. So it's close. It's about half. Whereas with trails, it's about a quarter. With neighborhood parks, it's a quarter. There is that gap, and as your community does grow, that gap will continue to increase if you don't keep pace. If the market, if your facilities and programs don't keep place with the expanding market, that will cause that gap to increase.
Wait, when you, if you back for just a moment, when you're talking about the adult fitness and the programs, you didn't get into the kinds of programs?
We did not.
Whether they were, like indoor facilities, like a yoga class, or participate, thing outdoors?
No, we did not, but we can, through the cross-tab process, as an example, say, "Okay, the people who said adult fitness and wellness programs were the most important, what types of facilities did they rate the most important? Did they rate indoor fitness facilities the most important? Did they rate indoor pools as the most important, because that would indicate lap lanes?" So we could certainly do those cross tabs. And in fact, as a client of our firm, just so you know, we will do additional cross tabs and analysis for you up to a year. Now, that doesn't mean that I'll come out here for free for a year, unless I get a baseball bat with autographs, you know, we talked about that, that I'm a big baseball fan. But it does mean that if, that if John wants to call me up on the phone and bend my ear for an hour, or you all, that's, if I could help you in an hour, that's great, there's no charge. So if, you know, a real key thing is, if you think of questions after this, and you say, "I'd like, you know, ETC to do some additional analysis on that", that's part of the reason that we're out here. And then when you look, again, at recreation programs, you could see that you've got a good topic. The adult fitness and wellness programs are at the very, very top. The second most important program area is to households is community special events. And that definitely is a program area that goes across whether you have young children, whether you have teenagers, and whether you're empty nesters. People love community special events. And then when we look at recreation programs that households currently participate in, you know, what I see is that if, when you look at the size of the marketplace, let's say for youth sports programs, it's about fifteen percent say that that's very important. You're the dominant player when it comes to youth sports programs. You've got about ninety percent of the market participates in your facilities. But that's the second most important program. So again, it's really saying, you got a high share of that market, continue to do a good job, because I think Peoria, being a family community, there's nothing more important to parents and their kids. At the same time, opportunities exist to actually to drastically increase your programming in fitness and wellness. Right now, fitness and wellness, if I could go back, thirty-one percent of people are saying it's one of the foremost important things, and thirteen percent participate in your, in your facilities. So I think with the importance people have of indoor swimming and indoor fitness, in a sense, if you do move forward on an indoor facility, they're helping you with the design of that. Then actions, as we talked about, that households would be most willing to fund with their current tax dollars, you could see almost a dead heat, first choice with maintaining and improving existing neighborhood parks and recreation facilities, and then right behind that, maintaining improvement, existing libraries. And you could see that over, almost half the public, when you ask them, "What's your top three choices?", are saying maintaining and improving existing neighborhood parks. And that's, they're close to seventy percent of people who are using those, and that's that location factor of being close to home. That's a big aspect of your system. And you could see when they asked that, only sixteen percent, so eighty-four percent of households responded with some answer. And by the way, and I normally always say, nobody is wrong on their opinion. They may not be in the majority, but when you're talking about it, you know, a lower, you know, level that's a sixth place, or seventh place, or eighth place, in a community the size of Peoria, you're talking about twenty thousand households. That's a lot of people. And then when you look at actions that households would be willing to fund with additional tax dollars, you know, you could see that the largest blue line is purchase land to preserve open space. That's the number-one choice. And then develop additional walking trails, that's the choice of the most people. And I've taken a lot of your time. I appreciate your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as we proceed with the process. And I'm gonna turn this back to Stacy.
Thank you. So, just following up on some of Ron's points, as you can see, the community feedback shows that it's a well-rounded and comprehensive programs that we have in Peoria, and the diverse offering, including AMPM programs, summer camps, everything from youth sports. I mean, it really is essential programs that meet the needs of the citizens and reflected in the survey. And in addition, some of the other needs that are out there, arts and culture is always something that is important to the community and a need that's developing. The libraries, we had a great discussion with staff, and the changing environment of libraries is more of a business incubator, community center, so forth. So the, there's evolving trends out there that are reinforced by the survey. And then, as the facility needs grow, and a future facility is evaluated, that one-stop shop that really can serve all those needs, from recreation to community centers, is something that the survey's leaning towards, from the information that we received. Another aspect of the process that we work through is a task called benchmarking. And this is a really good opportunity to compare Peoria to, and we chose with the assistance of staff, some elite agencies around the western region. We looked at Chandler, Mesa, Scottsdale in Arizona. We looked at Santa Clarita in California, and we looked at Fort Collins, Lakewood, and Westminster in Colorado. There's some similarities within the department organizations between some, some have parks, recreation, libraries as well, some don't have libraries... recreation, libraries as well, some don't have libraries, some have golf, some have sports complexes, so there's variabilities in, in these numbers. But, the key is, is that all of these agencies are very successful programs, and, and they also have a range in population, so the way, way some of the numbers rank, that affects that too. But they're successful programs in, in a very good grouping to compare Peoria against. So, so we have some of the highlights from there, park acreage being dedicated parks. This is, yes?
These comparative, they're really cities, I think, right? Cities and towns?
Mm-hmm.
Did you use the same ones across all of these categories?
Correct, yes. All, all of these, the, the seven cities that we used are all used within these categories. Plus, there's also a common average evaluation called Pro Rages, which is part of National Recreation Parks Association. So, they're, they're inventorying all the data around the country, so that there's, there's common averages.
Okay.
And so, there's, there's areas, and there's, and that's why I say there's variability to this, because of how people categorize their developed park acreage, being pure parks. You know, for instance, Peoria has five hundred plus acres, Mesa has two thousand characterized as developed park area. So, so there's very, there's big variabilities in, in some of those. But what, what's important?
But the goal was to pick kind of premium cities, is that the idea?
It is, it is.
If you'd have gone the other end of the continuum, we could be number one on every one, right?
You could, you could, but that, in the end, that...
What, what's the purpose of the premium? Because that, we want to benchmark against the best, is that the idea?
Exactly. I think it's important that as we look at the programs, we look at the facilities, and we look at, I guess, the way the operations are done at these municipalities, that we don't want to necessarily, we want to pick the best, and we want to measure against the best. And that, we went through this quite a bit, and we went through a couple of sessions to really make sure that there were similarities, there were some things that were different. But we did set the, the benchmark high, and that was intentional.
So, some, some of the highlights, just to take the top three, park acreage to manage acreage, which includes the rideaway and basins and so forth, to total acreage, which includes open space. You can see how the commitment to open space, and open space provides a lot of services to the community as well. Peoria continues to, to rise in that comparison. So, so as, as the community services department starts to grow in terms of additional facilities on the developed park acreage, that'll bring the comparison of where, where Peoria stacks in comparison to the national average and the other communities, it'll, it'll raise it up the pecking order there. So, it's positive, because the total acreage aspect, on the national average, Peoria is right in there in, in, at the national average. So, that, that's, that's a good comparison. You know, trail mileage, trails have obviously been expanded here and will continue to be, and you can see that it's, it's right up there in comparison to these other jurisdictions. Full-time employees, right comparable with the other jurisdictions. One of the interesting things is, there's a lot of seasonal employees here too, which actually puts Peoria on the higher end because of sports complex and year-round seasonal demands for use. So, you compare it against a Colorado city, they don't have as much demand for seasonal employees, because they have a much quieter winter season than we do. And then, as you go into operating budget, Peoria has, in comparison to some of the other jurisdictions, some don't have libraries, some don't have a sports complex. So, that's where Peoria is higher in the operating budget side, because there's, there's more components within the community services department. And then, on the cost recovery side, which is, which is important, and many of the programs in the recreation department do unbelievably well on cost recovery, Peoria is at about twenty, almost twenty-nine percent cost recovery, which is just below the national average, but, but a really good look, place to be. So, the other piece of this is level of service too, and that you rate against population. It's just a standard comparison to help compare how the population needs are being met. And generally, Peoria's right in there in the average side, and then, as, you know, Ron mentioned in the survey, the need for indoor facilities, and that does show that, that right now, Peoria is, is on that calculation, not as highly distributed, distributed in terms of how they're meeting the recreation needs, or the indoor facility needs. So, in the end, the needs assessment process here, which is the culmination of evaluating all this data and working with, with staff and the team here in the community, is, is been distilled down to these five areas of focus. And, and, you know, it becomes a, this basically, basically becomes the starting point for recommendations as we expand on these items, develop the strategies, and, and provide kind of that detailed roadmap that I talked about in the beginning. And parking facility development is what has made Peoria successful, why people are here, and, and that's a top priority, is reinforced by the survey, and associated to that is the program and service delivery, associated to recreation program, arts and culture and libraries. And with that, continuing to build on the partnerships and collaboration that, that you have found such success with, and making sure, and looking at other opportunities to expand, grow that. And then, what follows in with that is, how do you manage that in the end? And, and, and always the most important piece is funding the development of that and the management of that to be successful and continue being a competitive city in the, in the valley and nationally, so that residents continue to come and want to be in Peoria. So, in the end, we'd love to hear if you have any additional feedback regarding the, the key points that we talked about in the beginning, in terms of community input, a level of service, and then, the big picture idea of the areas of focus. The other piece, I have to do self-promotion, John forces me, but mypeoriaaz.gov, since we're, we're on TV as well, so I hope everyone on, on TV is logging in right now. And we'll, we can, we'll be reporting on that part. So, with that, I thank you, and I appreciate the time, and we'll leave the areas of focus up here and be available for questions.
Questions, comments? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, one of the things, and I saw John nod his head, and I guess the, so, fitness facilities came up as important, but the use isn't as high as the importance people put on it. So, maybe we can start looking at ways to get people, so they say it's important, they want to do it, to, to actually do it more. And I know in fitness and going to fitness centers, one of the things that are important to people is that there are other people there they know, and they can have buddies, and then, they can encourage one another to go. You know, maybe we can look at ways to enhance that connection to get people to come more often, since they desire to, but other things intervene, and, and they don't, right? And probably one of the things that intervene is it's, it's not easy always to exercise, right?
Well, Councilmember Ames, indeed, I think that's one of the things, when you break down the results and even, even the quality of programs that we have, and we look at the numbers, it's, it does, it recognizes that there are a lot of people that don't know what we do. And our staff recognize that, we've consistently, in working with Bo Larson and others, that communications, marketing, the strategy behind that are key. Parks and recreation nationally is about getting people active, getting them out the way to the different levels of use, meeting the needs for the individual while meeting the needs for the community. Health, wellness focus is key, and the more ways, and we even heard that through some of the, the public meetings, like, I didn't know you did this. They came out and they learned about programs at our public meetings, and it was very rewarding to be able to show them the Get Active brochure that gets mailed to everybody, and that's one of those key areas that we also see that people have learned, that was in the survey as well. How do you hear about us? Well, those that have heard about us, hear about us through the Get Active brochure. So, again, these, these are practices that we need to continue to do and, and bolster, and, and even from the creative design of programming, make them more attractive. Yeah, I've, I've joked before about the underwater basket weaving, we offer that. And, and it's fun, and it's a water experience, and while it might not necessarily get your heart rate up, it gets your creativity active. And then, that exposes people to the lap swimming or the other types of programs and facilities that they have. So, there's a lot that, that our team, and I'm consistently impressed with the entire team, the different divisions, the library division, recreation and Brenda, and, and everybody on this crew that, that really is looking for the right way to connect people to play.
I, I'm a little bit like, like Mr. Ames, I'm curious about the adult fitness and health and wellness thing, and I'm also interested in the indoor aspect of it. Is there any way we can drill down and find out if you're not getting kind of numbers there, although there seems to be a demand for it? Is it because we lack the locations? Is it because we lack space? Or is it because we lack the variety of classes? Is there any way we can begin to determine that? In other words, if you, if you live up, up north, then is Real Vista too far to drive?
Right. We heard that. And that was that, you know, if, if that was available and closer, I would partake. And, and it was loud and clear. And, but at the same time, we've got other providers, and so, I think that was pretty clear, that there was needs are being met, not necessarily by us. So, it's, it's bridging that gap of getting more people engaged in healthy activities. But that was very, in drilling down to that data, and that is the type of question that, that Ron can help us with, when we get to a point of looking at what types of facilities are necessary and are the appropriate need fulfilling from a municipal standpoint.
Yes, I would think that they're interconnected. How far do I have to drive? What kind of classes, and is it crowded?
Very much so. People live in their circumference.
And what kind of class?
I think a good way to do that is through our analysis, is to look at people who participate in the programs, there's thirty percent of those who don't, and where there, where there are similarities and where there's differences. And I would definitely, nationwide, the number one reason people don't participate is lack of awareness. It's, it's absolutely the biggest thing, and...
Lack of awareness, you said?
Excuse me?
Lack of awareness.
Lack of awareness, and, I mean, that's why people are on TV all the time with commercials, et cetera. But I think, Mayor, that, that a good way to do, a good first step would be to look at, doing the cross-tab between those who participate in programs and those who don't, and that, that may lead us to further mining efforts.
Okay. Ms. Carlyle?
Yeah, and I was going to say a similar thing. When you talked about location being the number one issue for people to participate, if it's convenient, they're going to go. And obviously, when you look at the composite level of service, you see that there are, there are location issues with where our facilities are, and they diminish as you go farther north. And so, you know, when you talk to the people who are farther north, they're going to say, I want to participate, but I don't. And they might go to a commercial facility or not, but they're not participating in the cities. So, again, I would like to do the same thing, drill down, get the real reason. You know, we, we talked in the past about putting circles around where the parks are and, and the level of, and the service area, and see who is being serviced in their city and who's not. And I didn't see that in here, although the, the colors are, are a good representation. But I think the, the circles would answer the, how far is somebody going to drive question? And that might help with our location question also.
I agree.
We, we, we actually have that analysis, so, yeah, sorry for not including that in here, but we can, we can share that with you.
Good.
As a follow-up, yeah. Because it based, it's based on the population density, and then, the same radius that is used for the level of service exhibits that you saw.
Thanks.
Mr. Lieutenant?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. As you traveled around the city, was there any kind of constant theme that you ran into that was, say, concerns or complaints from citizens?
I guess, I guess the, the common theme that we did, did hear was the, the challenge with lighted fields and being able to meet the needs of, of the different youth sports and, and getting field time out there, because there, there's limited fields. And I know staff's currently working on that initiative as well, so that was one item that we heard. Probably, you know, consistently, that the trails and expansive, expansion of trails, just to create more loops, that type of kind of activity was, was usually discussed as well. And then, you know, tip, as, as I highlighted on the wish list, the additional recreation facilities were in there as well.
And were the lighted fields, were they, were they a pro or a con, because I know...
Well, there were, there were, well, at least from the people that were there, were positive and supportive of wanting lighted fields. Obviously, going in to wherever that might be a retrofit or a new facility, there's the adjacent residents, but from the meeting a week and a half ago, seemed like residents are, are open to that situation. Yeah.
I noticed that the Parks and Recreation Board, you had working sessions with them, and they identified, and I'm grateful for this, that they identify the need to explore diversification, specifically that of adaptive recreation. I think the city of Peoria does a really good job with the facilities that they have available, Special Olympics and those types of things. Was that identified at all in, as you toured the city? And is that something that you're going to be addressing in terms of amenities or facilities for those people who may be developmentally delayed or physically disabled?
Well, we, we did meet with staff as well, as what we spoke with Parks and Rec Board on that, and what they're offering today, and, and opportunities to expand in the new, or the renovated community center, was, was it an opportunity to provide more programs there as well? So, it, it is something that, and we'll make sure and highlight as well, but, but making sure there's emphasis on, on those opportunities. And I appreciate you mentioning that.
Councilmember Lieutenant, as well, we, we currently are under contract and are in process of, we've hired a consultant, recreation accessibility consultants, who are doing a complete audit of all of our recreation facilities, parks, centers and others, with a, an attention to accessibility. So, in addition to the programs that we offer, and through our therapeutic recreation specialists, we are currently in a very detailed analysis of where there may be risks and what facilities may need some information or more adjustments to the, the physical content of those facilities.
Great, thank you. My last question is, your board also identified and should consider recreational trends. Just, just a personal comment, I, I don't really see very many people playing tennis anymore. So, I don't know if that's a, still a big deal or not, but when you look at a trend like that, is our city still, when we build a park, are we still looking at tennis courts? And have people identified that as something that they really want? Is, when you, can you change a tennis court to a pickleball court, those types of things? Is that, is that what you look into as you're doing these types of surveys?
Well, the survey, the survey did highlight some of those, those variabilities, but as we look at, we, well, let me step back. We can evaluate kind of distribution of those facilities within, within Peoria through GIS and create that kind of quick analysis. And that's the goal, is to set up staff with that ability to do that analysis as part of, part of what they have at their fingertips. Yes, some of those trends, like tennis, are probably, it's not as hot of a trend, but there, there are areas that we need to look at in terms of how it is distributed to make sure that, that those facilities are available. So, so it's a balance of both trends, you know, bike parks are, are a very popular trend, as are, you know, say skate parks from the youth perspective, especially from our, our youth session. And so, you know, there, there's only limited opportunities currently for that. So, you know, looking at how those, a program or a facility like that might be implemented in, in the right location is part of what we're able to look at with the information that we have today.
Thank you.
I think that the, the tennis courts is a good example, quite frankly, of something that, you know, doesn't stand out, but as I was looking at how people answered, you know, whether they had a need, you had over thirteen thousand households who said that they had a need for tennis. And those houses, about two-thirds of them were, were satisfied, you know, felt their needs were being met. And about one-third, so about five thousand households felt like, you know, their needs were fifty percent or less being met. So, that's something that is, I, I think, a very good example of something that could fall off the radar screen from a standpoint that people don't say it's in the top five or it's in the top six, but that's still a significant amount of people. And so, it's obviously, you know, it needs to be on the radar screen. And that's, that, one of the advantages of mining that information, is you can compare things against each other, but that's a significant amount of people.
You didn't answer the question as to whether or not you can convert tennis courts to pickleball courts.
As a, as a physical construct, yes, that's possible. And, and even multi-striping is, is an approach. Where... Where we would run into challenges is that tennis is a different sound. So if a tennis court is close to your backyard and we convert that to pickleball, somebody might not be so happy, unless they're a pickleball player. But those are all the types of things we have to consider in making a retrofit.
Yeah, just as a comment in passing, I probably had five people in the last three weeks ask me if we were going to put in pickleball courts.
There's been press?
I've never even seen the game played. But I mean, it's, apparently, it's a little bit like racquetball was in the 70s, all of a sudden it's becoming overwhelmingly interested by people. It just seems to be exploding in terms of interest.
It surprises support.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. John, I had a question for you. In looking at these programs and service deliverables, we obviously are seeing a need for more facilities up north. And I'd like to, again, remind you that I'd like you to look at the possibility of rolling wrecks while we're waiting for a new facility, a new park being brought on up in the north area.
And we, staff is actively engaged in looking at spaces, looking at partners, and even reaching out with some of the leisure class types of offerings up on that northern area. So I know that we've made some offerings and are continuing to be creative and move to having the right place and building that up. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I got one additional question. Since tennis came up, that's one that I've gotten from some citizens that, why more tennis courts, like at Kiwanis there and over by Oasis School? So maybe tennis is more specific to certain areas, meaningful to certain areas and not to other areas. Because I, in fact, I've kind of gone by there a number of times and I've seldom seen people playing tennis there. And they put in quite a few courts.
The, the design of where our tennis courts are located, typically two, maybe one, in community parks. We wanted, the intent was to make them available to neighborhoods for play. The alternative to that type of design might be a major complex. I think a couple other municipalities built complexes and went out and got tennis pros to run the program. It's a different approach. I think that, from my experience in managing systems-
Where you could have kind of leagues or teams to play.
Right. You would need more than one or two courts to run the level of activities. So it's a decision point and an amenity process. If tennis was up there with trails investments, we might consider looking at things that are really intent on more of a tennis program. The approach that Peoria has taken over the past several years is to have them available in neighborhood parks. And people get together, and I've been by, Fletcher Heights has a tennis court, and there's always somebody up there.
It's popular there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But as long as we're on tennis, didn't I see that was kind of very low in terms of use? It was at the bottom?
I'd say kind of medium.
Was it?
Yeah.
So that's a question, but I think my main point is, I think, and Bill had a good suggestion, maybe we need to repurpose some facilities, some recreational activities or fields or programs. And maybe the thing is to look at, in some areas, they may be more popular, certain things may be more popular in some areas than in other areas of the city. Trails, I see that trails is very important. I know in down in my part, Palomar, people say, "Well, it's hard to get to the trails." I know we have one that we're considering, 83rd south of the sports complex, and I think that would be an ideal one to bring. Because I get a lot of people say, "I'd like to be on the trails, but, you know, I got to drive and I'm not really sure where those trailheads are." So, and I think that's one area where the north has done well and the south hasn't done as well, so. Kind of a reverse looking at that. And I do agree, the north does need a lot of things, but trails is what's really strong up there, right?
Yeah, and I think that'll be part of what we're looking at, the recommendations is-
There's a lot of open area, we could do it more easily up there than in the more urbanized area at the time. And a thing that, and I don't know if we really got to, were things that people may be unhappy, for example, with parks. And I don't get it so much anymore, but I used to get more of the cleanliness of the parks. And we know some of our citizens do trash them when after, and they don't pick up after themselves, and other people go there and they feel uncomfortable using the park for that reason. Did you get any feedback, any open ends on things that we could improve? I think we do a good job of trying to keep cleanliness, and we have volunteers that come in and help, right, or identify when there are problems in parks. So I'm happy about that, but-
Yeah, I think, just kind of on a minor item, probably the addition of additional remada seating, shade, those type of things were mentioned as things that could be improved that would be beneficial to the youth there daily.
And we have been looking at that, I know, and some of the latest neighborhood parks have more remadas and covers, sun protection.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm happy to see this research, and I think the staff can utilize it and do some little additional mining to see, to make the fits, to bring the actual usage up to par with what people say are the most important.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
Yeah, I'm talking about trails and facilities. When are we going to finish that trail from olive to northern? Because there's a gate there where they can't go beyond that gate because it still belongs to the county. Do we have any idea when they're going to finish that? I've been getting a lot of questions on that.
Questions on that. I'll have to refer to Mr. Haynes.
Right now, in design, design should be completed by the end of the calendar year. Bidding is, it's done through HADA and Mayor Culpeper County, so, along with the city. So construction is scheduled to begin early next year and completed by summer. A year from now.
2014, is that?
Completion.
Complete. Now, okay, thank you. Now, as far as facilities, you know, you and I met today with some instructors. Are you able to find someplace for these karate young kids to work out? They've been having this for years and all of a sudden they just stopped it and they're pretty upset. And even up north, these kids come down up north, all the way to the community center for karate. Now you're going to stop it? And, you know, my concern is, and their concern is, why are we stopping it? You don't even know. I asked you that question.
Well, sir, we stopped, the program stopped due to an instructor change. The instructor actually resigned. So staff are working to find a replacement and work with. So the gentleman we met with, we've got, or reached out to them to schedule as early as next week.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Carmen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. The second item we have is an update on the policy with respect to special events. And I'm pausing as we change out some staff here, it's going to come up as the consultants leave. But at the end of the budget process, the council suggested that we get back together in a study session soon to discuss the special events policy. And that is what we have as the second item this evening. So back to John and Jeff.
Thank you, Carl. Well, once again, we'll take the next couple of minutes and we'll go through some great program elements of community services and the community at large. Through the fiscal 2014 budget discussion, staff and council had a great dialogue about the benefits, the challenges, all of which associated with executing special events. At that time, council requested that we bring forth, as staff, effort to establish a council policy on special events. What's important to note, that what's crafted here is a draft, and tonight's session will assist in our refining the details in an effort to bring back a formal council policy early in the fall. The sections build on each other, and as I present through this, at the conclusion, I hope to get your feedback and clarification on two key points, the classification of events and the procedures. All right. Over the past several years, Peoria has become known for its various and quality community special events, like the one in the picture that we'll be doing later this week. By establishing a formal policy on special events, council may further express the importance of special events in Peoria. And as you heard in the master plan update, these, our citizens have expressed the importance of special events to them as well, and that they value them. Much of the information that is assembled, is in this draft, comes from specific city code, ordinances and city contract language. As we have pulled this information together, we recognize this, it also appears to align with our council policy goals, community building, enhancing current services, economic development and leadership and image. Section B of the proposed policy outlines and details the overall next several sections, but the purpose is to identify definitions, criteria and processes. The purpose outlined further by definitions of key special events, key outcomes, standards and guidelines, classifications. We do include the permit process that's already outlined in ordinance. We've outlined an application process and a process timeline for special event support funding requests and reporting. So as a definition of a special event, and these are actually pulled from several different documents as well. Events are an activity or a series of activities that have an identifiable time and place, that might affect traffic, it involves a significant number of people, it may need city services, police and fire, environmental services, solid waste. Often, the events in Peoria are produced in conjunction with other community organizations. They are typically held on, or actually, they're always held on private or public property.
Is there a third?
And-
There may be.
And they certainly may be city funded, which we've got a number of city funded special events, programmer produced, funded by a private promoter or various partnership structures. So key four areas. In section D, we look to connect what we see as outcomes for events. Obviously, we all agree that safety is paramount. Additionally, and you've seen these before in previous presentations, our community events promote a sense of community, create awareness of cultural and education, and promote economic development for current and new businesses. Part of, section E encompasses the core event standards and guidelines. What's really important for the community services department and other departments as well, is to set the driven expectations for events and how we handle the processes. We will protect assets and citizens. We will produce and coordinate the city budgeted events. So as we go through these bullet points, there's, these are core areas that are the expectation and guidelines for city staff to help promote and deliver the important special events in our community. As well, temporary use permit is a process, the special event applications. It's important that we have a very fair, open process for executing those requests. So for the classification area, as we look at how to classify certain events, it's important that we identify the city roles and responsibilities. Is the city a lead or is the city playing a support role? And then every event, every activity, almost every decision, has a risk and a reward analysis. We have also, as the community services department, as the city at a whole, we've identified or classified signature events, and those are like the Fourth of July, the Halloween Monster Bash and many, many more. Community events, and Councilmember Edwards will remember the Polar Plunge, the Gain Event and Bravo Peoria. Community events might be smaller and more focused. We had a good community event up at Terramar Park a couple of weeks ago. And then one-time events, those things that come up every year that would just be a one-time. Back on our community events, we've got four neighborhood activities that we're working with council members to get out into the community, smaller focus, but very, very important. And then we have private promoter events. We want to further classify these in kind of two structures. One, affiliate events. And over the years, we've had a number of good affiliate events, Fiesta Peoria, Black History Celebration, and there's a true partnership in how those get executed. And then non-affiliate events. And we've listed things like sports tournaments or 5Ks. Those are typically business functions, sports tournaments like softball, those guys, that's what they do. Now, we haven't traditionally sponsored those types of activities, but worked on a partnership.
Thank you, Mayor. John, just one quick question. Where does, where would the P-83 event fall under these classifications? Signature, community, one-time event?
Well, I would take a stab. As it is significantly city-sponsored, city-funded, today it's a signature event. I think the original concept was to have the potential of an outside promoter be able to assume a larger role. We do have a contract with an outside professional promoter to help us execute that caliber of an event. And when the attendance, when the sponsorship, when the sales element, it's basically with a financial model, truly supports an event moving from a city-sponsored signature event to a private promoter event, those are decisions to be made in the future.
What is that threshold, dollar-wise, as far as going from a signature event, the city to a sponsor, you know, to a sponsorship?
Some of that really comes down to what's the role, who's the partner, what's the vision and what's the intent? There's an opportunity to probably move things further, faster, but I don't know that we could really identify a specific threshold, who's responsible. But every budget year, we talk about this, and I think that's part of our process, that by putting this into place, we'll have an open dialogue, a way to discuss what we're looking at, what our challenges are. Every year's a whole new set of challenges when we talk about doing special events. And to identify a threshold that it might move would really depend upon who that private promoter is.
Okay, thank you.
Section G of the proposed policy really dives into a couple of areas that are already in effect. Temporary use permits are required for all events on private property. Section 14 of the zoning code covers that. Special events application, chapter 16 of the city code covers the requirements for all special events applications. Both those processes are in place, working very well. Chapter 16 actually outlines the special events review committee. The committee is comprised of designated representatives from city departments that might be involved with an event, specifically police, fire, might be community development thinking about zoning issues, community services, obviously with a lot of the things that we do or ways to support. So there's a lot of very diverse, very knowledgeable, cross-section, cross-functional team that comprises the special events review committee. Section I delves into the request for special affiliate event status and any potential in-kind support. So traditionally, we've had a number of requests from private promoters to ask for city support in executing events. That might include facility use, it might include police or safety services, it might include solid waste, different ways that the city has received requests. In this year's budget sessions, though, there was good discussion about that and the importance of identifying a process to do this fairly. By setting standard criteria and a process that's easy to follow, I believe it will better serve the community. This slide identifies some of those key areas to identify criteria when working with some of the private promoters. So the process. This process really to ensure an open conversation about how the city supports outside promoters. We'd recommend that this is an element of the annual budget process. As a requirement, I think that it's very important that we put the request out there, let folks know that this is part of our process. By December 15th, our goal would be to have those compiled, community services would be point on that. Requests would outline an amount of in-kind. This past budget year, $3,000 threshold was agreed upon. We would then communicate that to the promoter as well. We would expect to know what the event audience, the concept and the element, different components of the event are as part of their plan. The requests that are meeting will then be summarized, or the requests that meet the requirements will be summarized and become part of the special events budget presentation. And requesters, as those are public meetings, will have an opportunity to be there and respond to any questions that you may have. We recognize that not all events are going to be ready or planned before December 15th, so we do want- so we do want to make sure that we have a way that should we connect with the right partner, should we have a new group out there that is inspired to conduct a quality community event, that we have a way for them to request funds or support that's outside the budget process. So we've identified that and would request 120 day prior to the event to make that happen. So, reporting requirements. An important piece here is that the reporting requirements really echo the types of information that we require of those agencies or groups that receive grant funding from the city. Similar information is also collected through our contracts and on certain projects. This is a closing loop of the agreements that enhances accountability and transparency. Many city events are dependent upon sponsorship funding and partnerships. Those might include radio stations, utilities, and businesses that provide true cash, as well as perhaps products and other elements to make the, make the event successful. What we've heard recently, or over the past year, several years, that different requests, there's confusion out there from some of our sponsors, city sponsors. They have expressed a desire to have a one ask, rather than somebody coming to them for many times. Sometimes that's happened within our own organization, where one person goes and asks, and then we get another. So it's a, it's a constant thing that, that we hear typically from the big businesses, that the one ask is always better. Second...
Can you clarify that, one ask?
Sure.
For a certain event, more than one person asks for the same...
Sometimes that's happened, not, not specifically here, but I can assure you that's happened. The, so, the importance of a, of a city sponsor or a business sponsor for an event, again, cash, in-kind, those kinds of supports that go into, to making the event successful. The, the businesses have expressed a desire to have a single, and it might be even more than one. So rather than us going to the fourth, same business for the Fourth of July, then back for the Fall Festival, and then back for the Spring Festival, the request is, let's centralize that, let's make it part of our business budget process. So that might be a multiple ask.
So for like an example, what might be right after the budget process, and the city's special events are established on what they're going to be for the year, at that point in time, we will have our promotional marketing group meet with some of these different partners that we have, and at that time, identify what are the different events, identify what we're seeking as far as a sponsorship at that point in time, allow for them to give their feedback, all at one time, as opposed to just once then, and three months later when the next event comes, ask again. And there seems to be a lot of confusion when we do that on, on how that works.
Oh, you're talking about the same party asking for more than one event? Is that what you...
No, let me clarify if I might, Councilmember Ames. They're talking about soliciting of donations and contributions for events, rather than asking businesses or entities multiple times for contributions to just do it once in a year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Carle?
Thanks. I don't want to get too far ahead of you, although it looks like you're, you're kind of getting to the end of it. First of all, I want to say that I think this ordinance is really good. I really like the definitions and the purposes and all of those things. But I did have a suggestion. In E, Special Events Standards and Guidelines, as well as the slide that's on there right now, for private promoters, number eight says, "Complete a post-evaluation report for each special event with input from the city." And then we've also requested that same thing from private promoters, that we get a post-event report. I would like to have a compilation of all of those reports for, for the entire year, and be able to make that part of the budget process. So we can look at each event for the entire thing and say, yes, this is a good expenditure of our funds, or no, this isn't, or we want to continue to do this, or we want to, you know, make changes to it, or whatever. But I think that that's a good time during the budget for us to be able to evaluate, and this is a great tool if we're going to expect that from internal as well as external.
Great point. Okay, so with that...
Pretty good timing, question.
Have a question, Mr. Sefton, about signature events. And my first question is, how are costs broken down in the signature event? For example, the Peoria Arts and Cultural Festival. There's a set amount of money put in the budget for that event, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is, does that budget and money also incorporate the costs of using city facilities, employee hours that are used to make that event happen? Or is it just a specific line item to cover costs outside of the city?
As a city-sponsored event, the, the staff budget, if it's not a salaried budget, would be included in that budget. That there would not necessarily be a collection of fees or dues, because we don't pay ourselves to utilize our own facilities.
Right, I thi- I think just from a budget side, that's exactly right. We have an operational budget, it's a special events budget. Included in that is your staff within that, and then various line items based off of what was approved for the different events. So they're included within that. If you wanted us to quantify the total cost of those, that would be separate probably from the budget process, but is something that we would be able to do.
I would be interested in that, and I understand that we're not going to charge ourselves, but at the same time, that helps us understand the true cost...
Right.
...of the event.
Correct.
Okay. So that's my first question. My second question, this is to you, Mayor, how, what is the process to make any changes to the, to the policy? As we go...
Make up your suggestions, and we'll deal with it.
Okay, because I have several.
We do have the time.
I have several suggestions. I'm going to go through those very quickly. Under signature events, I am fine with the language, and I would just like to add, under the sentence that says, "Signature events are guided and managed by cross-functional special events planning committee and guided by the special events supervisor," I would like to add, "and/or promoter or and/or elected official."
I would personally object to that.
That's fine, Mayor.
It's not the promoter's job, and it's not, certainly not the elected official's job.
Okay.
It is, it is the responsibility of the staff.
Okay. And we're going to discuss them, Mayor. My second...
May I comment on that also? The city has a cross-functional team that works on all of those plans. What, what specifically are some of those functions?
Well, Mayor, can I, may I ask my questions for...
Please, give me a second.
All right.
So if we're talking signature events, community events, one-time events, as, as city, these are city-funded, we have a special events budget. It's before Mayor and Council through the special events presentation. Many are funded ongoing, and many are funded one-time. And Jeff will correct me if I'm wrong. Still a rookie, right? And, and so those signature events have been the traditional city-sponsored, led by our special events coordinator and special events supervisor, supported by the department, and a network of people that help execute those events.
Right, I think that, and a good example is, every one of these events is different, and they're managed differently. In some of these events, you have the supervisor in special events that is very hands-on in administering and utilizing community services staff to make that event happen. In some, you're going to have a partnership with some of the promoters, and they're able to have some of that farmed out to some of their different activities. But in all of these different events, we want to make sure we have a cross-functional team really be involved to make sure that we're not missing anything, that they're in the cracks. So that's why we have language in there as far as that, that management, that kind of elements in there. The oversight, we always would like to have the special events supervisor have a sense. It might be that they have a different business model to deal with those events, some are promoter, more driven or more involved, some might be involved with other outside individuals. That's, that's something that we could work through. But we do feel that if they are a city-sponsored event, probably that the city should take, the city staff probably should take, at least the supervision, take the accountability for that.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
I have a couple of additional changes to the policy. Under affiliated events, that would be number four, A, I would like to change the name of affiliated events to nonprofit events. Because most of these, well, for A, I would like to see, see nonprofit events, and BB, and non-affiliated events be promoter events. I think there's a difference between a promoter and a nonprofit. A promoter's looking to make money, a nonprofit's not looking to make money. I think there should be some distinction. And under the nonprofit event status, if council agreed, I believe the amount should, I would like to increase the amount to $5,000. And also, if the event is held on city property and it meets all the criteria designated for a non-affiliated event, that fees for using, for example, Centennial Plaza or any city facilities would be waived, and the $5,000 would be used for specific police, fire, and in-kind services.
Mr. Rivero, may I ask a clarifying question? For the nonprofit classification, would they still require council approval?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
And lastly, I have a question about auditing. If, if this went forward, the way I understand, we audit every other nonprofit in the city is, if the city gives nonprofit a $5,000, that we would audit that $5,000. Under this situation, we're auditing, auditing everything regarding the event, even if we're just giving in-kind services.
And if I'm not mistaken, the intent, at least for staff, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we are auditing the use of our funds. If for whatever reason, city funds are placed into one other area, in whatever capacity, we would like a sense of how those public funds were used. If not, and they were in-kind, then there probably would not be an audit required. Does that seem...
Well, the language in here says, "Financial summary including general revenue expenditures and in-kind services. The city at reasonable times and places audit the books and records of any private promoter as related to the special event." And if we go to the second to the last, second to the last sentence, it says, "This right to audit empowers the city to inspect the papers of any private promoter or some contractor employee who works on the contract to ensure the private promoter, some contractors, comply with the city rules and regulation. This includes, but not limited to, all revenue received and expenditures."
Are you...
For the event? Oh, I see.
Yes. I think if the city gives $5,000, or $10,000, or $50,000, that we should audit for the money given. Under this comment here, we're auditing everything the nonprofit is doing, which we don't do for any of our nonprofits that we give through our subcommittee process. The way I understand the policy is, we audit, we want to make sure that the money given from the city is used for the event or for their nonprofit programs. But this language doesn't say that.
If it's all right with the council, we can go back and try and clarify that language.
Okay.
Um, don't we want to, though, be able to evaluate whether we want to have that event again, or give any money, or allow them to use our facilities again? And don't we need a more well-rounded audit? I mean, we are auditing ourself for events, why would we not audit to decide if we want to continue with that event, or contribute at all to that event?
Well, I think at the end of the day, council will decide if they want to support a specific event. All I'm saying is, numerous nonprofits come to us in March, April, and they'll ask for money. And what, what I understand about the process is that if we give a nonprofit $5,000, we verify if they're spending that $5,000 where they said. Under this language, what we're saying is, if we give you in-kind services, we want to be able to audit your entire books for the event.
But are you comparing the nonprofits that we give funds to in order to serve the community to a nonprofit that would have an event?
Yes, because nonprofits serve the community. A lot of these funds are generating at the event, it's used for scholarships, it's used to give back to the community.
I, if I may, I would object to that. One of the reasons that Fiesta's Patreys went away the first time is because they were raising money, but they weren't paying the scholarships for the women from the pageant. And that went on for a couple years before we learned of that lack of scholarships. So, but if we had known that right away because we audited them, we'd have stopped it sooner. So I disagree with you.
And how would that apply to every other nonprofit, if we don't know, if we don't know that they're using the money appropriately?
Well, I, I think we have to have the right to do the audit. It doesn't mean you're going to do every audit. But if you hear rumors that they're not fulfilling their role, they didn't, they didn't pass on the money for scholarships, or whatever else, then you might want to go back and audit that group.
Mayor, I'm not disagreeing that we should audit. There's a difference between auditing what we gave them and auditing, auditing their entire books.
But you give them money because they say they're going to do something, but we have no way to be sure. We, we can audit and say, yeah, we gave you the money, but we can't be sure you fulfilled your promise for the event.
Why not? We could verify the money that, that we gave them.
Why would you fear an audit?
What's that?
Why would you fear an audit?
I'm not fearing an audit.
Okay.
I'm just saying that every other nonprofit that we work with...
Spot audits are good.
Okay, we verify what they were using the money for, the money that we gave them. We don't go into verifying everything that they do on their own time.
I think having that authority is a good thing. Doesn't mean you exercise it.
And we're not saying that we would audit their entire books. We'd say we'd audit this event that they held on city property, and that we gave them funds to, we contributed to this event. So we wouldn't audit every other event they do in other places of the city, or anything like that, just this one.
All I can say is, I've done research in regards to our nonprofits in the city, in regards to other nonprofits in other cities. Their way of auditing is, whatever money they ask for in the city, and the city contributed to them, that's what the city audits.
Okay, I disagree with that one. And then I have one more question in regard to increasing the $3,000 to $5,000. Wasn't that $3,000 something we agreed on during the budget session?
It, it was. I, I think you can handle that by saying, whatever amount the council sets during the budget time.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, make it sort of an indefinite thing, rather than a, a specific number, because that might change from year to year. I think that's, that's relatively easy.
The reason I increased it to $5,000 is, under this policy, it seems like a nonprofit would be charged for everything. For example, in this case, if a nonprofit holds an event at Centennial Plaza, Centennial Plaza alone, the, the cost of renting it out would be $1,700. So that $3,000 would go away quickly. What I'm saying, if they meet these criteria, if they're a nonprofit, if they meet the cultural aspects, it's in the city of Peoria, they're promoting it, the $3,000, if it's $3,000 or $4,000, should apply to direct cost to the city.
That wasn't the deal during the budget hearing. If you want to make that change for next year, all right, we can discuss it during the budget.
I thought that budget session, we were talking about in-kind, police, fire, that kind of a thing.
Mm-hmm.
We weren't talking about the facility necessarily, were we?
No, this is, this is a late tack on, and you're going to go back and alter the budget again now?
How are we going to, how are we going to alter the budget?
Well, because you can change the amount of money that's given.
Okay. Let's do it $3,000, but what I would like to see is that the nonprofit who's hosting the event is not charged for using city facilities.
Oh, okay. Mayor?
I'd like to stay with what we were talking about at the budget, and put in this ordinance, which is what we're talking about right now, that it would be, it would be tied to the budget. And we've already had that budget discussion for this year. So don't put a specific amount in here.
I'm going to, we've got 10 minutes until the council meeting. I'm going to put a stop to this right now. We will come back, and we will pick this up after the summer break. Okay? Because I don't, I don't see where we're going to solve all the issues tonight. Is that all right with everybody?
Well, I, I think we can talk a little more about it. We've got some time.
Well, we can talk right up to the start of the meeting, but then you're not going to get a break.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
No, I'm done.
You're good with that? You're good with that?
I can continue to talk, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, I'll go back to what I believe you did initially. The first one was to add, and/or council member on this, to the group that plans events. I strongly object to that. Council members are here for guidance, you're not here to plan parties, you are here to set policies. And I don't think the council member's influence on the city department that's planning any kind of an event... kind of an event would be greatly influenced by whatever the council member wanted. And I think that's wrong. It's not our position, it's not our job.
But if the council member is the key person who's making this event happen, I think that's a different thing.
They can make all the suggestions they want and they can work through Mr. Sefton, but to actually participate in it, I think is wrong. And I think you're opening yourself up to a lot of problems.
Purchasing problems, moving outside of the checks and balances that are put in place by the purchasing department and by going through staff and the procedures and processes that are in place. When you make it a political issue, it becomes a possibility, possibility for us not to have checks and balances.
Can I ask, does the staff have a problem working with a council member as you have in the past with Fiesta?
Well, Fiesta is not a signature event. We're talking about the major events here, Brian. We're not talking about some sort of sponsored event.
Maybe it should be a signature event.
Well, that's a different discussion entirely.
Okay.
In which case, I would strongly suggest that if it becomes a signature event, the council members have nothing to do with it, just like you don't have anything to do with planning the Monster Bash at Halloween or the fireworks or any other major ones. It goes strictly over to staff and we stay out of it. It's not our purview.
Okay. And that's the discussion. I just want consideration for my changes to the policy, Mayor. If you disagree with it-
This was one of your suggestions that we're talking about now.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. That's fine.
This was your suggestion. I'm saying I object to it.
Okay.
I think it's a very bad idea. I think it opens up the door to too many problems.
Okay. I disagree, but-
Yeah, I figured you would. Anybody else? Comment?
I'd like to not put that in there.
Okay. Interim.
What?
Interim.
I couldn't hear.
Council members can participate in the planning of major events or not?
Yes.
Ms. Carle?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. Next is the nonprofit piece, to allow them to use the property for no charge?
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
How have we done it so far? I don't, what's the history on this?
If I may, I believe that what traditionally has happened for these type of events, where we would generally charge the fee for the venue itself to those different entities. And that would be, if there was a decision on providing in-kind support, it would generally, we have reflected that in the amount that we're referring to. So, in the budget, when we had been discussing the $3,000, I believe that we were under the impression as staff that that would include if there was fees that were included for the venue. So, for example, a Centennial Park, if there's a certain amount of $1,700, that would be a charge, an in-kind amount that would have to go through the budget process.
So, why would we stop doing that?
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. If an event is held at Centennial Plaza by a nonprofit, the park itself is going to cost the nonprofit $1,700. That $3,000 is not going to go anywhere. In the past, what I understood is, when we didn't have a policy, the city would waive those type of fees. Under this policy, and I could be wrong, those fees are added. So, that $3,000 doesn't take the nonprofit anywhere.
But, but you're saying it was not waived in the past?
My understanding, it was some of-
For the city affiliated events, if you recall, we didn't have a policy in place. But those types of events, like Northwest Black History or Fiesta Peoria, I believe that by default that we had waived those fees. Other different groups that came in, that we didn't have that, that certain kind of relationship, would have been charged a fee. So, we were trying to clean that up in this policy and identify those two different areas. So, if, I don't know if that helps you.
So, sometimes we did it and sometimes we didn't.
Correct.
So, and the suggestion, no, and the suggestion is, when it's a nonprofit, we waive the fee.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yep.
Might, it would be really good as a part of that final reporting, that we would look at any in-kind fees along those lines that were waived, personally don't like as a term because we've set pricing policy. All of that's adopted on an annual basis by the Council. And we might look at it as in-kind, a summary of those types of charges or fees that we would typically get if it was an outside promoter. In circumstances of nonprofit, based on the affiliate, that would be part of the proposal process. So, we would look at it as upfront, have it itemized and have a very clear understanding at the beginning of the application process so that all of those, what we would see as fees, aren't necessarily waived, but they are included in the support package.
Then the last part is the audit piece.
Mayor, before that's considered, I have a question for Mr. Kemp, if he could come up.
I would appreciate if you would really come up now, we're running out of time.
Mayor, Council Vice Mayor, Mr. Kemp's here as well, but this has been primarily my issue, so he asked me to take the first shot at your question.
Okay. One, the only question I have is, does the city have the right to audit a nonprofit if the city provides in-kind services?
Yes, as long as it was related to the function of the item. So, it would have to be a direct connection.
Okay. What I meant is, does the city have the right to audit everything?
No, no. It would only have to be, it could only be limited to the items related to the-
Quick hypothetical.
-in-kind portion of the event.
And a small hypothetical here, if the city gave a nonprofit $3,000 in in-kind, not in in-kind, a check for $3,000, does the city have the right to go look into the books beyond the $3,000 in?
As a general question answering that hypothetical, I would say no. It would be limited to that scope.
Thank you.
Does that allay your fears?
What's that?
Does that allay your fears?
No. I just wanted to clarify for you.
Audit, yes, no?
Audit the event. They held them to the same standards that we hold ourself to. We want to know how many people came, how the money was expended, you know, if, if there was a return for the investment of holding this event at all. I think it's fair to know the answer to those questions. I'm not saying look into their books.
Well, that's what the policy says.
An audit? Why, because of the word audit?
No, it says, "Audit all financial summaries and expenditures for the event." And what I'm saying, Kathy, is, we should verify the attendance numbers and where our money went. But to get into their books and everything else, I think would be inappropriate.
Okay. Can we clarify somehow that we're going to audit the event, meaning the same standards that we hold ourself to when we audit our own events? And we say, how many people came, how much money we spent, how we spent that money and what we feel the return on, on that was. That's what I'm considering an audit, and that's what I would like to make sure we continue to do with every event.
So, it's language clarity.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other piece?
That's really evaluation, right? Not, not a financial audit so much.
Financial evaluation.
So, with the directed changes, we look for consensus. Are you okay with this? Okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned from sitzings. We will resume in about three minutes.